I'd like to call the special meeting, the public work session, Thursday, June 15th. Would you please stand for a moment of silence afterward. Mrs. Williams will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Williams?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Ms. Williams, would you read our mission statement, please?
The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, attendance, please.
Ms. Allen. Reverend Fleming. Ms. Hines.
Yes. Reverend Lamb. Here.
Present.
Reverend Patillo.
Present.
Dr. Whitaker.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Parent.
Here.
Seven members present, three members absent.
Thank you. Next item is the approval of the agenda. You have had a copy of the agenda. What is the board's pleasure?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is there any way we could hear Michaela's discussion item before we go on to the votes?
It's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
Okay.
And one other item. We have a presentation from USI. So if we could meet with them before the... Well, at least let that be the first item after the hearings.
All right. We're going to take 4.5. And we're going to move that up to...
It could be the first item.
4.1. Okay.
Yes. Do you need to sign those?
Yes.
Yes. I don't know if there's been an update or so forth since I've been in board docs, but I understand there's a motion that's already been made and so forth. But I would like to add to closed session if we can also discuss personnel matters.
I don't know.
I think it's A1.
Sir.
It's A1, I think.
A1.
Personnel matters is A1, then.
I believe so. I have to sign.
Okay. All right. The agenda has been amended. We're going to move... We're going to move 4.5, which is Presentation, USI Insurance Services, to 4.1, which will be after the student discipline.
Student representative.
We're going to do the student representative before we go close. Yeah. Then after close, then 4.1 will become USI. And then 4.2, which is consideration of signatures and just follow it down the line.
Well, they are moving up before the close, right?
Yes.
Don't you say after.
Is that what you said? I thought you said after.
After the hearing.
After the hearings, they would be the first.
Oh, the hearings?
Yeah, we told them to come around 6:30.
Oh, okay. They're not here.
No, they're not here.
Okay. That was my question, was if they're already here.
No.
Okay.
Okay. Motion's been made in second, and then it's been amended.
I'll remove the second?
Remove the second. Move the motion.
Remove the motion.
All right. Now, a new motion. The board's pleasure is that we move 4.5 to 4.1. And that is before... That will be the first thing right after the student discipline. And that we go into... When we go into closed session, we add the...
Personnel.
Personnel, whatever that code is. A1.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any more discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Parent.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Right. Well, at this time, we will hear from our student representative, Ms. Cait Moore. And I think I better get out of the way.
Good evening.
Good evening.
There are cupcakes in there. I brought cupcakes as a gift.
Oh, yay!
You're so sweet. Over the past few weeks, there have been many promotional ceremonies within Portsmouth Public Schools. Students are moving up to first and seventh grade while others are moving on in their life, starting anew at college, in the military, or elsewhere. Nonetheless, we are so proud of them. There is another member of Portsmouth Public Schools whom we are also proud of, Dr. Bracy. He was voted Superintendent of the Year by Virginia's PTA. Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's sad to say that this will be my last meeting as student rep for Portsmouth School Board. I'm not sure who will soon take my place, but to whomever, congrats and good luck. This is a time-consuming job that requires a lot of attention, but it has a lot of benefits. You will meet a lot of inspirational students who are younger than you, who will push you to do better because they are so young, yet so smart. You will meet adults who will encourage you to keep going when you want to quit. The odds may be stacked against you because you are from Portsmouth, and people don't expect much. But show them what Portsmouth is really made of. Show them that we are the best of the best, that we can do anything Virginia Beach can do, anything DC or Maryland can do. With the awesome support system consisting of Superintendent Bracy, Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Williams, Ms. Allen, Ms. Atkinson, Reverend Flemings, Mrs. Hines, Mr. Lamb, Reverend Patillo, Dr. Wiggins... Well, Mr. Wiggins and Dr. Whitaker. They will support you 100%. They will listen to your concerns, critiques, suggestions, and ideas. Thank you for everything. Thank you all for this wonderful opportunity to see politics in action, to investigate student problems, to stay here all night awaiting the end of closed session.
(laughing)
Thank you for welcoming myself, my ideas, and everything else that came along. Thank you for allowing me to bring students' complaints, concerns, and successes to your attention. I would like to thank Ms. Reese Newsom for going everywhere with me for moral support, for listening to my reports before I gave them to the board, helping me fix the reports, and especially for guiding me through my term and being an amazing mentor. Also, thanks to Mr. Dean Schlefer for his help. Thanks to the PTA volunteers, mentors who gave their time and efforts to invest in students. Thanks to all the students and teachers, faculty and staff, janitorial and kitchen staff, and the principals who helped keep this school system together. Last but certainly not least, I would like to thank God and my family for blessing me with the knowledge and understanding to do this job to the best of my ability because through Him, all things are possible. Though I will no longer be student rep, I will still be involved in the activities within Portsmouth Public Schools. I would like to continue to work closely with all of you, especially Board Member Atkinson, so that we may get the anti-bullying initiative started. It has been my pleasure working alongside you all this past year. Thank you for this opportunity. I would like to leave you with one last thing. Be who you needed when you were younger. Thank you.
(laughing)
At this time, Michaela. Along with Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Williams, and the rest of the Board of Education, I have a small token of appreciation for you. And it's a plaque. And if you will come... And the plaque, it reads, "Portsmouth Public Schools Award of Appreciation, Michaela Moore, in recognition of your dedicated service as the first student representative for the Portsmouth City School Board, June 15th, 2017."
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is closed session. And Mrs. Williams, please.
I move that the board enter to a closed meeting under provisions of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the following purpose: Consideration of student disciplinary matters as permitted under subsection A.2. Consideration of various personnel matters, including the assignment performance matters and resignation of specific school employees, as permitted under subsection A.1.
Second.
Motion's been read. Second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Parent.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay. We are now in closed session.
Yes. Mr. Lamb.
Yes.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Parent.
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay. Okay. Is everybody in? The next item on the agenda is 3.2, Consideration of Expulsion Disciplined Case Number 2016-17, Number 48. The recommendation is new direction for the year. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Really moving fast.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Allen.
I'm abstaining.
And you have to give your reason for it.
Abstaining as I was not here for the entire process.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
Reverend Fleming.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
No.
Mr. Lamb.
Abstain.
Got to give a reason.
Based upon the evidence that was shared during the case.
Okay. Thank you.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Parent.
Yes.
Seven yes votes, two abstentions, one no. It passes. Miss Chandler, recount. Six. I'm sorry, six. Yes.
Next item is 3.4, which is Consideration of Expulsion Disciplined Case 2016-17/50. The recommendation is new direction for the...
Forty-nine.
Oh, I'm sorry, forty-nine. Forty-nine. Recommendation is new direction for the year. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval, 3.3.
Second.
That's correct.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Allen.
Abstain as I was not present for the presentation.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
Reverend Fleming.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
No.
Mr. Lamb.
No.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Parent.
Yes.
Item three...
Six.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Six yes votes, two no's, one abstention. It passes.
Yes. 3.4, which is expulsion case, discipline case number 2016-17/50. The recommendation is new direction for the entire year. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Allen.
Abstain as I was not present for presentation.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
Reverend Fleming.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
No.
Mr. Lamb.
No.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Parent.
Yes.
Six yes votes, two no, one abstention. It passes.
Next item is 3.5, Consideration of Expulsion Case Number 2016-1751. The recommendation is new direction for the entire year. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson.
Abstain due to evidence presented.
Reverend Fleming.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
No.
Mr. Lamb.
No.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Parent.
Yes.
Six yes votes, two no's, one abstention. It passes.
The next item is 3.6, Consideration of Expulsion Disciplined Case 2016-1752. Recommendation is new direction for the entire year. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson.
I'm sorry, we're on 3.4.
3.6.
Yes. Reverend Fleming.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
No.
Mr. Lamb.
No.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Parent.
Yes.
Seven yes votes, two no. It passes.
Next item is 3.7, Consideration of Expulsion Case Number 2016-17/53. The recommendation is new direction for the entire year. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson.
Abstain due to evidence presented.
Reverend Fleming.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
No.
Mr. Lamb.
Abstain based on evidence presented.
Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Parent.
Yes.
Six yes votes, two abstentions, one no. Passes.
Chairman.
Chairman. Parent.
I want to ask our board. Kathy, can you remove my first abstention, although it doesn't affect the turnout to a yes vote?
For which case?
It was the first one, 3 points.
3.2?
3.2.
The first case was 3.2.
The one where abstain, it was 3 points.
I think Fortinamax is saying that I think it was probably more like 3.5. It was the previous one that she abstained on.
Yeah. It was 3.5. Let's see how many. It was 3.4. 3.4.
So you're changing your vote to...
Changing my vote. Oh, I'm sorry. I meant the wrong one. Hold on. It's 3.5.
3.5.
So you're changing it from a... To abstain.
To yes.
To yes.
Okay. And 3.8 now is Consideration of Expulsion Case 2016-1754. The recommendation is new direction for the entire year. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen.
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson.
Yes.
Reverend Fleming.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mr. Lamb. Reverend Patillo.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Parent.
Yes.
Eight yes votes, one no. It passes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. First of all, I would like to apologize to the audience. We had a long agenda. And these things take a lot of time and another hour's late, but we've got... We had work we had to do. At this time, we're going to move... We have adjusted our agenda, and it's going to go from... It'll be a presentation by USI Insurance Services LLC, Distort.
Good evening, Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Williams, School Board Member Dr. Bracy. Tonight, we have with us from USI Employee Benefits Practice Leader Terri Yates, Vice President Michael Washington, and Account Executive Gwen Flick. In January 2015, PPS went self-insured for health care. And as part of that arrangement, we worked with our benefits consultant, USI, to assist us in the management of the program. Some of this assistance comes with expert analysis of the rates projected health care costs, which goes into where we put our health care rates for the plan year. They also help with compliance matters and also assist with open enrollment, just to name a few. At this time, I would like to welcome Ms. Terri Yates to present projected health care costs and plan recommendations for plan year 2018.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi there. Do you want to sit? Do you want to stand?
You can sit.
Is this right here?
Yep. That's fine.
I'll be glad to have you. Good evening. Thank you for having me. No problem about it.
And thank you for waiting.
No problem. No problem. Understand. So, USI is very pleased to work with the school board and with staff in projecting costs for your employee benefit program. And just so you know that, we actually have a team of financial analysts and underwriters that we work with, along with compliance attorneys that keep the plan in compliance with the Affordable Care Act and population health management. So there's a whole team that works with us, along with the account management team, which is behind us here, Michael Washington and Gwen Flick. So I believe that you have the materials that were included in the board packet. And I'm here to walk you through the presentation and answer any questions that you might have. Sound like the good plan? Okay. Just some background, which I think Brittany went through. Portsmouth has a contract with Optima Health to administer their medical plan. As she said, the funding of the plan was changed from a fully insured plan to a self-funded plan in January of 2015. We do contract... We do contract with Optima Health for the reinsurance of the program as well as the administration of the plan. You currently offer employees three medical plans to choose from. There are two HMOs, which are titled High and Low. And there's also a point-of-service plan. The majority of the enrollment is in the two HMO plans. The point-of-service plan has very low enrollment. In fact, I think today, there's... When I last looked, there was only 19 employees enrolled in the plans. And the majority of the employees in the two HMO plans that have dependents that are covered are covered under the low-option HMO, and that is primarily driven by the contribution schedule, and we can go through that. In looking at the performance of the plan, since January of 2015, they performed to the budget within 1% favorable. So it's performed very well. In this current year that we're in, 2017, there were plan design changes that were made to the current programs. We increased the office visit co-pays by $5 for primary care and $10 for specialists. We added a $100 annual deductible on pharmacy. We added a $500 deductible to the low-option HMO, and we adjusted the out-of-pocket maximum on all the plans. And this is keeping pace with medical inflation in order to make minimal changes to the employee contributions. Employee contributions are what's deducted from their paychecks. On the next slide, you'll see this is just the current portfolio of benefits that the employees choose from. And as I said, the majority of employees are enrolled in the high and low HMO plans with those employees that have dependents in the low HMO. And the split is pretty close, 50/50 between those two plans. On the next slide, just a little bit of utilization information for you. The demographics, year over year, have changed just slightly, about 1 and 1/2%. Paid claims, year over year, did increase about 8%, 8 and 1/2% to about $16 million. There was a slight decrease in enrollment, as I said. So when we look at it on a per-employee average, the increase was roughly more, about 10%. Pharmacy represents about 18% of the total claim spend, although we did see a decrease in pharmacy, which is somewhat unusual when we compare that to other organizations. So, good for y'all. There were three large claimants that were in excess of the reinsurance contract that you have compared to two in the prior year. When we look at the claim spend for employees versus dependents, about 70% of the claims were due to employee spend versus spouses, which were about 15 and dependents about 14. So about 70% employee versus 30% dependents. For the contributions for the current plan provisions, the projection, if we continue the current plan designs and the current contributions, we are projecting that it would be... We would have to increase the budget about 11%, which is roughly about $2 million. Okay? So when we brought that to the benefits committee, there was... They said, "Well, what can we do to mitigate that $2 million?" And so if we could go to the next... This slide, excuse me. So what we did was, we did a lot of benchmarking first. We went and we looked at what the other Southside schools were doing. Again, some of them are on January plan years. A lot have migrated to Januaries. They used to be on October. You were on July. So they're in that planning process right now, going before their school boards. And so it's kind of a moving target. But we did benchmark against the other schools. We came back with a proposal that mitigated the projections almost to a neutral. And the plan designs to do that were too much. So we went back to the drawing board. When we benchmarked it, they were a little bit too drastic. So you have to find that balance, right? And so we came back with these plan provisions that seemed to work. And so just roughly, what we are recommending is a discontinuing of that current point-of-service plan. Because it has such low enrollment, the employees... The cost to participate is so high that it's really not valued by employees. So we want to provide choice to employees that's meaningful and that's valued. So we want to replace that with something else that we think will be of meaning to the employees. So we're going to discontinue that, and we're going to replace it with another plan. Looking at the low-option HMO plan, we're going to add a feature that allows for out-of-area benefits, which was what was included in that point-of-service plan. We had those 19 employees. We're thinking they were enrolled in that plan because perhaps they had dependents that maybe live outside the area that they were required to cover. Your utilization outside the area is less than 2%. So we wanted to have a... So we wanted to have a plan that allows for that. So we're going to put that feature in the low option HMO, which has a very low contribution. So we still have that feature within the portfolio of benefits. Then we have, we're going to increase the annual deductible by $250 so it paces with inflation. And we're going to keep, we're going to increase the out-of-pocket maximum by $500. On the high option HMO, we're going to add a $250 deductible. We're going to add co-insurance. And again, we're going to increase the out-of-pocket maximum by $500. I'm going to show you what the other school systems are doing so that you can see how this benchmarks against the other school systems. And then we're going to introduce a consumer-driven qualified high deductible plan. This is a very contemporary plan today. You'll see that the other school systems are including these plans. And we'll talk about that a little bit more. It's going to have an annual deductible, but once that deductible is met, the plan will then pay 100% of all of the medical services for the rest of the year. We also like to talk about modifying your eligibility definition for spouses. You have, right now, as we talked about, utilization for spouses is somewhat minimal in that it's 15%, so it's not taking over the plan. You have approximately, when we looked, 167 spouses covered under the plan and possibly 50 more in that family category. Your contribution strategy for spouses under the low option HMO, which is where they are, is extremely low, benchmarked against the other school systems. And so there's a subsidy that is, that is built into your contribution strategy today. What we're seeing the other school systems implementing as a result of the Affordable Care Act, which requires organizations to provide coverage or offer of coverage to employees and dependents, is a provision that limits the spouse's eligibility to inclusion in the plan so long as they do not have access to other employer-sponsored plans. So if a spouse has access to employer-sponsored plans, in other words, they're working and they're full-time and they can get coverage through their employer plan, they would not be eligible to participate in your plan. So in other words, it's limiting the plan's liability. And so, while today, you don't have a lot of claims in that area, it limits future large claims. Because your contribution is so low for spouses, it doesn't create an adverse effect for the plan and allows for those spouses that are stay-at-home spouses and you have a, an employee that can afford to cover their spouses. Ballot, did that, I want to lose anybody in that? Oh, got a little rambly there.
Well, I had a question, not about the spouses. But what is your out-of-area benefit? How do you decide what the area is? Is it a 100-mile radius? Is it a zip code change? What determines your out-of-area benefits?
Providers that are not currently participating in the Optima network. So if the provider is not participating in Optima, it's out of network.
Doesn't Optima go as far as roll up?
It does, but what it's going to be is an out-of-network. So if they're not participating in the Optima network, it would be considered out of network. So you'd have benefits. So it would be Riverside Hospital is not in network. So if you went to Riverside, it would be covered out of network.
So did you mean to put up there, out of network? Or are we, are we talking about two different things here?
No, it's out of network. I put out of area because I thought that would make more, it would be more understanding because we think that people are using the point of service plan because they have dependents outside the area.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this something that we would have to discuss with employees as far as the option? About the, or is this already set in this particular plan and the cost? As far as the employee spouses?
So with these recommendations, we would provide this information to employees to let them know if this is okay.
Well, I'm saying, do the employees have any input before we vote on these plans?
Um, just the benefits committee.
Right. Because I would like to hear from the employees how they feel as far as changes in, in the plan, as far as the spouses or whatever. Definitely.
I, I just want to.
That's a major change.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I piggyback my concern with Ms. Williams because people do work in small companies where their insurance is still high. And so while, you know, I see us limiting our liability, then that is then taking, because they're a small business, and that's taking a lot more money out of their pocket for that insurance. So I would just, I'd like some, some more input on that one.
How would we gather that?
I'm thinking we would probably need to survey.
Well, I mean, as, I've worked for the city. The city used to have mandatory meetings that we had to sign up. Different times that all the employees went and knew exactly what was going on. It wasn't a survey. There were times that we had to go there and the people from Optima or whomever would present information to us. And then we made the decisions or we could come back and tell whether we were okay with it or whatever.
Yes, we do conduct, we do conduct those meetings based on what changes are to the plan.
Yeah, but you, you sound like you've, you conduct them based on the changes that have already been made. We like to hear input from them.
Yes.
What they think.
Yes.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Close this here. Okay. Cardell, I think was.
Okay. Well, Cardell, come on. Part two of, I was going to state, when would the new recommendations have to take effect?
January.
January 1.
Yeah. And open enrollment would be in November. Opening. So we got plenty of time because you've got open enrollment in November. Mr. Lamb?
And, yeah, and that's, I don't have an issue with that, you know, getting input back from employees and so forth. I guess how I, how I understood how you was explaining it too, that all of this would be built into the different options, you know, like Plan A, Plan B, Plan C, and an individual would play in that way. As far as the health savings account apart, do you have details with regards to how that would be set up and so forth? Like I know with Optima, some school districts offer, I guess, as kind of like an incentive to sign up for it, that they offer like, you sign up and you automatically get $500 or $1,000 right off the top. Or do you have details about that?
So if we go to the next slide?
Okay.
So this would be the portfolio of benefits that incorporates those changes. And I know that you have this in your packet. They, these changes would roughly bring the projection down to 6.2, 6.3%. Okay, so roughly shaves off about a million dollars. So looking at that high deductible plan, so with a high deductible plan, if preventive services, so your annual exam and screenings and any prescription that is for preventive, like cholesterol medications, high blood pressure, those would all be 100% before the deductible. Okay, so this plan pays for those. Then you'd have a deductible and once the deductible is met, the plan pays 100% for the remainder of the year. In this case, the deductible under this plan is going to be, we put in, the deductible is $2,700. Then the plan pays 100%. And then the out-of-pocket maximum would be $6,000, okay? The reason there's, it pays 100% is the prescription drugs do have co-pays. So that's why there's a difference between the deductible and the $6,000 because there are co-pays for the deductible, for the prescriptions that are not preventive. Okay? So if we go to the next slide, and we may have to skip around a bit. This was the benchmarking for what the other school systems are doing so that you could see they have co-insurance for all of their inpatient and outpatient hospitals. They have deductibles that are comparable to what we're talking about. Their out-of-pocket maximums are comparable. I would say that Chesapeake is somewhat of an outlier on this, but Chesapeake has kind of always been an outlier on their medical plans. If we go to the next slide, for the high deductible plan, what I wanted to talk about a little bit is, we've, we've looked at studies on high deductible plans and what we found is, by including high deductible plans, what employers are seeing is that it really is helping in mitigating increases, overall increases in their healthcare costs. And at the same time, they are not seeing people go without care. What they are seeing is a reduction in outpatient care and pharmaceuticals, but not the reduction of people getting necessary medical care. And these are studies that have been done in different academic settings. So it's not USI. And I can provide the papers if you wanted to read more about that. Again, preventive care screenings and prescriptions are paid at 100% before the deductible. And what we're seeing in the proposed American Healthcare Act is some alignment in what you can put in the health savings accounts and what the maximum deductibles and out-of-pockets are. So they're starting to align. So we're seeing some support for these plans. And I'm saying that these are contemporary plans because we see that there is a shift where individuals are having to assume more financial responsibility for their healthcare and for that cost. And these plans, because they're qualified health plans, allow you to set up a health savings account. A health savings account allows you to put money in on a pre-tax, pre-tax basis or a tax-favored basis and allows you to save that year over year for current and future medical expenses. So the money can be withdrawn on a tax-favored basis, similar to a 401K. It's similar to a 401K because it allows you to save the money on a, on a pre-tax or tax-favored basis, but you can use it today for medical expenses. And so for individuals that are having to assume more financial responsibility, it allows for them to save for that. And so we're seeing that added. And if we went back a slide, you would see that both Virginia Beach and Norfolk have added a health savings plan in the last couple of years. Suffolk will be adding in 2018, a consumer health plan. And I think Chesapeake is going to be the only one that doesn't have a consumer health plan. So we are also recommending that for those that enroll in the, in the consumer health plan, that the school board make a contribution, an introductory contribution, to incentivize those that feel like this is something that they can participate in, a contribution into the health savings plan.
Question. HSA. In a previous division where I worked for, if our HSA hit, say, $5,700 because that was our contribution, anything over $5,700 was then transferred into a 401K for us. Basically, say, encouraging us to save money. Not that I would have ever hit the 57. You understand what I'm saying? Is there a cap on the HSA? And is the HSA transferable? Because in a day and age where we have people that work five to seven years and then will transfer, I hate to see them, even though they're not with us and I want all of my qualified teachers with me, if they leave, I hate for them to start over and have money that's sitting in an HSA that they never used, that now they have to start over again. So is there a cap? And is it transferable? And what percentage of our staff do you believe is going to go into an HSA? Because an HSA is designed for a younger generation, not an aged, tenured worker because you can afford your medications and your contribution at the same time. That was a loaded question. I'm sorry.
I'm going to try to, and check me if I don't get to all of them, okay? So here we go. So, health savings account is a, considered a trusted account, which is a checking account, meaning that it belongs to the individual, not to the school board, not to the school. It belongs to the individual, so it's, belongs to them.
Okay.
It's theirs. And the money that goes into that belongs to them and cannot be taken back by anyone.
Okay.
All right? So once the money goes in, it belongs to them.
Okay.
It cannot be transferred by anyone but them.
Okay.
It cannot be transferred to a 401K.
Okay.
All right? Because it's in their account. Now, some of them are set up that will allow the individual that owns that account to set up a investment account, which is, I think, what you were probably involved in. So you can, when it hits a certain limit, and that limit can be determined at 2,000, they can set up an investment account and invest it in mutual funds or stocks because it is a savings account. And then the money that's earned in investments also earns on a tax-free basis. Okay?
Okay.
So it belongs to them. So the money that goes in belongs to them.
Okay.
It's between them and the government, okay? How they spend that money. If the money comes out for qualified medical expenses, it's not subject to taxes.
Okay.
If it comes out for any other reason before age 65, then it's subject to taxes and penalties.
Okay.
All right?
Okay.
So we're clear on that. It belongs to them.
Right.
Right. There are limits to the amount that can go in each year that are set by the IRS and it's indexed every year. And that was what I was talking about as part of the Affordable, the.
American healthcare.
Thank you. American Healthcare Act. They are talking about increasing it and matching it to the qualified health plans that you have to be enrolled in, in order to establish and contribute to these.
Okay.
Okay, so that they match up? Because they, they're, they go with the, the participant's fiscal year, which typically is a calendar year when you file your taxes. Okay? So it always belongs to the individual. They take it with them.
Okay.
The money stays in there. If they don't use it, they don't lose it. It rolls over from year to year to year.
Okay.
And once they hit 65, after age 65, they can take it out. If they don't use it for medical expenses, it's subject to ordinary income tax. So it becomes somewhat like a 401K.
Okay. And percentage of use for an HSA?
So the, I can provide to Brittany, studies that show that it is not just for young people.
Okay.
That in fact, the enrollment in, in qualified high deductible plans with HSAs has grown in the United States. And the sector that has the majority of the enrollment today is in manufacturing. And that the average ages are predominantly in the 30s. Keep in mind that the average working age is now in the 40s. So that's, that's not really unusual. So it, it's not necessarily for just young people that don't have claims. When we look at the statistics of the utilization, like for your group, the majority of the people covered don't have a lot of claims. It's driven by a few people that have large claims.
Okay.
So we have projected approximately 200 people would enroll in the plan the first year. And this is based on, we are going to do a communication and education campaign that will involve meetings in the schools with a lot of education, one-on-ones to help people understand that this is a savings plan that provides financial protection for them and how to help them save for future, you know, this is kind of, we want them here for their careers. And so as you have young people, okay, coming in that don't have medical expenses, they can save for when they do have children or something and it'll be there to help them. We're also going to be offering other types of voluntary plans that can fill the gaps. We're also going to be offering other types of voluntary plans that can fill the gaps. And so like anything else, we'll be providing that information and education for them to make those choices.
Okay.
So that they can spend that, their money wisely.
Dr. Wood.
I just have a quick question for the proposed changes, if you can go back one. For the, let's see, I think it's back one more. Again, yeah, for the spouse exclusion, where you modify the spouse eligibility. Let's say I'm a spouse and I drop my insurance mid-year because of the cost of it, or if I get unemployed, can I enroll in PPS mid-year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
If you were to lose coverage because of loss of employment, then that would be a qualifying event, and you no longer have access to employer-based group coverage, then you can come on the plan.
And what if I just voluntarily dropped a plan that I had? I can come on because the cost becomes prohibitive.
If you, yeah, that, I mean, that wouldn't be a qualifying event because if you still had access to employer, if you still had access to employer-based coverage, then it wouldn't be a qualifying event.
Okay. That might be a problem. Okay, thank you.
I mean, the way that the eligibility provision would be written, the way we have it there.
And the reason I ask that is because healthcare is kind of up in the air right now. And I mean, there are some forecasts that the cost for certain plans may go up and become prohibitive. So if that happens to a spouse, they're kind of just left out there. So that's something to consider.
Yes, ma'am.
And I suppose I just need a little more education on the health savings plan.
Sure.
Now, you're saying that employees are expected to save for the healthcare. Is that what you're saying?
Not expected to save. This provides them a vehicle that allows them, if they wish to save, for healthcare costs.
Okay. So you still have the access to the same coverage of the HMO or the-
Right.
But you can also take your money and save?
Yes, ma'am. And we're suggesting that the school board make a contribution to the employee's health savings account. So there would be money in the health savings account for them.
And I think that when we met with-
If we go to, excuse me, I'm sorry. Flip to the slide.
No, I just said when we, on it's meant, I think that the recommendation was going to be a one-time $1,000.
Right. We did a benchmarking as well to what other school systems have we flipped? And we again, and again. So this, so for Norfolk is contributing $500 for employee-only coverage and $1,000 for all other tiers. And Virginia Beach is doing $500 one-time enrollment. And Suffolk is planning to match up to $1,400. They're still in their planning stages, but that's what they're considering. In other words, whatever the employee puts in, they're going to match it up to $1,400 to match, to cover the deductible that they are considering.
If I'm single and we put in $1,000, I can put in, I can put in up to, was it $3,600?
I believe that's what the maximum contribution for 2018.
Max that I can do for the IRS. But if I'm on the family plan, I can put in, I think it's 6,000. Or 5,400, whatever. I can add to it.
Yes.
I can add to it.
Yes, yes, you can. Up to the maximum IRS contribution, yes. Right. I've been asked to clarify that you can only establish the health savings account so long as you enroll in the qualified high deductible plan.
Right.
So you can't establish the health savings account if you enroll in the high or low HMO plan.
Right.
It has to be if you enroll in the high deductible plan.
Okay.
And the paycheck withdrawal, you know, that comes out. So if we go to the next slide.
Okay.
So this will, this shows you where the contributions, now these are per-pay-period contributions, which you have, you only, they pay two times for 10 months. So you'll see that we're making a modest change to the contributions for the high-low HMO. We're able to keep those. And then for the qualified high deductible plan, we're keeping those very low. And then they could make a contribution, the employee can contribute to the HSA, the health savings, through payroll deduction on a pre-tax basis. It would go right into their HSA plan.
And Ms. Williams, just, I'm going to give you my personal story because we, I went through this and somewhere else where we went from the HMOs to this. With the decrease, because it was employee and spouse, where we were paying $436, what we did is we took that $400 that I was paying and put it into the HSA. So my first year of building into this HSA, my insurance quote-unquote was still the same because it was going into the HSA. And then I got to back off of that HSA the second year because I had, I had a lump sum in that HSA. That was just a part of the education that we had when we switched.
And I would tell you, it's very, very important that if the board decides to go in this direction, that they have to educate.
Yes.
Explain to the employee. Because otherwise, you're going to have people are saying, "I don't understand this, so I'm back away." But you've got to educate people because we had, I mean, education's critical because it's different. But it's been around a while.
It's been around.
Yeah, about 10 years. But the bottom line, if people don't understand what they're doing, then that could be, that could be an issue.
Right. We want people to understand.
You can't do a one-time workshop and say this.
No.
It's got to be ongoing.
No. It's the same as when we introduced HMOs.
Absolutely.
I've been around.
And just looking at this from the 2018 plan, I mean, the high, the low, I mean, per-pay period, $1,000 for-
For a family.
So for a family.
So now you see why the people, the individuals that have dependents are all in the HMO low.
Mm-hmm.
It was designed to, I mean, your contributions, and this is something that was before all of us were, I mean, this has kind of been brought forward. There was a, from what I understand, so now I'm, I'm telling you what I was, was that there was a time where the school board's contribution was based on employee-only. Okay? There was no contribution for dependents.
Okay.
None. And so no one could afford to cover their dependents because healthcare costs were out of control. This was back to like maybe the 80s, and I remember. And so there, you were fully insured, and so I think what happened was you had the carrier reallocate the rates and make the employee-only rate really high so you could help, you could help cover dependents. And you did that in your HMO low because your employee-spouse rate was $20 higher than your employee-only rate. So you can see your contribution for employee-spouse is $35 today. Well, if you, if you benchmark that against other schools, they're paying $300, $400, closer to the $250 under the high-option HMO. So that's why, and again, you have about 157 employee-spouse. So it's not, you know, and you only have 15% utilization. I mean, you have people that are, you know, covering their spouse and, and I'm suggesting that you can see for 2018 to take it up just to match the employee children, if you decide that you don't want to change the eligibility for spouses. It's still not unreasonable to cover a spouse for $75 a pay period for 10 months. And the coverage is good coverage. And $65 for the high deductible plan for a $2,800 deductible, 100% plan is very competitive too. Now, you have a, you have a very competitive contribution. So you are, you're definitely subsidizing, you're helping your employees that are covering your spouses and the children. You are.
And I think that we do that simply because we have not been able to keep up with-
Right, no.
-paying for the areas.
Right.
So we try to do that with the benefits.
Right. What we did, what we recommended with the contributions was taking your current contributions and we increased them based on the projection. So it was 6.28, but we took them up, you know, and made slight increase on that one, employee-spouse, to bring it in line, you know, and maybe, you know, but it's a recommendation.
Just real quick, the CDHP, which is where the HSA would be at, we've got down here $150. But a person, and correct me if I'm wrong, a person can actually decide to contribute $125 or 200, or is that the minimum?
That's the contribution to participate, that, to participate in the plan if they have family.
Well, correct. So what we're saying is that, is that, so that's the minimum that a family would have to contribute every pay period?
Right. That doesn't go into the HSA. That's to participate in the plan. That's the payroll contribution.
Yep. That's what comes out of your payroll.
Right.
Out of your paycheck.
Right.
And then the employee would decide up to the maximum how much they want to commit.
Beyond.
Right.
Yes, correct.
This is, the 150 here, Mr. Lamb, is your ticket in the door, so to speak. And then what you contribute to go to that high deductible goes into your HSA, which is that portable money that she described earlier.
Would be in addition to that.
Plus, you should go get that $1,000.
Right.
So usually, and you might have shown it, how much is usually the deductible? They have to meet first.
For the high deductible plan, it's 27, 27, 28?
27.
27.
About 700.
Right. And because it's a qualified high deductible plan, the IRS determines each year what the minimums, maximums on deductibles and out-of-pocket. So it's 27 so that for individual and family, if you had family coverage, then the, only an individual within the family has to meet the deductible before the plan pays 100%.
Right.
So that's why we have it at 27.
Would it be a big difference or could you show us if we were still allowed the spouses' eligibility?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mary. The spouses haven't been incorporated into the projection because we don't know what that number would be.
Right.
So the figures right now are based on spouses still being covered.
Okay. Still being.
Right. We didn't take any, any claims out.
Yeah. Go back to that. To go, where it addresses the spouses. This is where I have the heartburn.
Yeah.
And my heartburn is that, you know, you've got, you've got two people employed and one has a better plan than the other. And so I'm going to tell my wife, well, you know, you can't be on my plan. And so I'm going to send my wife to their plan and it's going to be more taken out of her check because they can't afford it. So I have a problem with penalizing, I mean, that's, that's been a, to me, that's been a benefit. That if I can bring my family on my plan and it's cheaper, it's cheaper, you know, when you look at, both, both husband and wife have to look, if you're employed in different places, they've got to look which is the better plan. I mean, that's shopping. I mean, that's just being consumer-driven. And if I've got, if Forsen School's got the better plan, you better believe that's where I'm going. I just, that's my, that's my only.
So that plan recommendation can come out of the recommendations. That's why we wanted to bring it to the board to discuss.
I need terms on that one.
Well, that's one of my concerns. That's why I brought that up. And as long as the employees are educated-
Yeah.
And, you know, maybe sign off that they're educated on this health savings plan. Because it is taking responsibility for your healthcare and paying more for your healthcare. And maybe it does work with younger people, but if you have an aging workforce with a lot of, with a lot of issues and illnesses, is, and my doctor talks about the ACA with some of her clients, that some of them are at the point where they got to meet an $8,000 deductible with some of these ACA plans. They say they have insurance, but they really don't have it.
Yep.
Because they can't afford that. So we don't want to do anything to the employees to make it worse. And the, and the theme of a health savings account that's saving, of course, to save us money, but we certainly don't want to make it harder on them this one. That's my thought. As long as we're, they're educated on what they're, they're getting.
Okay? Is that the presentation?
Yes, sir.
Board members, you have any other questions? We thank you all for coming. And once again, we apologize for, business is business.
Understand.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda is consideration of the authorization of signatures in the absence of the superintendent. This is roll call. Vote for approval.
Second.
And may second, any discussion, bits, times.
Yes.
Let me get out, let me get out of your chair. Get my chair. No, no, no. That's all right. City of Sumer. All right, yes, ma'am.
Yes, I thank you. I just have a question about this. This is signature-only and not hiring power, correct? For the signature?
The signature.
This is signature-only. This does not give, this does not give anybody else hiring power, only you, correct?
Say it again.
For this, for this motion, the authorization of signature and absence of school, division superintendent?
Yes.
You are still the only one that will sign off on all of our hiring?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe that's on the agenda for next week.
Okay. Because usually we get them about this time of year? Yes.
That's next week.
Okay. Usually we get them about, I just want to make sure I'm reading it correctly. Thank you.
It's for discussion.
Okay.
Well, oh, wait a minute. It is roll call vote.
Yep.
But I thought it-
Roll call vote.
Roll call.
It says roll call vote.
This is, you got a motion already.
Yes.
You're right in the second.
All I need to do is call a roll.
What is the motion?
It is for this one, the authorization of signatures in the absence.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Next item on the agenda is the annual Title I, Title II grant application. Dr. Bracy or Dr. Taylor?
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Next item on the agenda is the annual Title I, Title II grant application. Dr. Bracy or Dr. Taylor?
Yes. And we have sales here to give us an overview. We put the Title I and II grant applications as well as the Title III grant application in board docs. As you know, this is an annual process and we have to approve these so that they can be submitted to, for approval to the organization by June 30th.
And I see, I'm trying to find, get to it. It's like every year, here it is. It's like every year indirect costs. We're at 3%. So I want, I mean, the board, whether you understand it or, just so that you understand, that $175,984, that's cream off the top of the application. And that goes to the division operate to pay for administrative costs.
Right.
So that goes to us and we use it to pay for administrative costs.
Right. Right.
It, it fluctuates back and forth, but 3%. Now, who does, who does the length and it's of effort to make sure that we're, we're not? You do? Are we in, are we in?
We're good.
I would, good.
We're in good.
We don't want to supplant, supplant and get into trouble.
And I would like to commend Ms. Hales because she has done an outstanding job with this, with these grants.
Oh, I know, it's crazy.
Coming into this position new, she had to learn, you know, how to write them. She has not only learned that process, but she's been very conscious, conscientious in making sure that we are using the funds appropriately
Right.
for our Title I schools and meeting with principals and engaging them in the process.
Right.
Under her tenure, this is the first time that principals have actually had the opportunity to have a voice, not, not actually had the opportunity, but they have more of a voice in how their funds are spent within their schools. Not the ones division-wide, but their actual school funds. And she involves them in that process.
Now, finance helped you determine the main, I mean, I would think that you would have to
We, we were.
Right.
I just want to make sure.
It's a collaborative process.
That's a really sticky one that you've got to watch.
Sir.
Okay, that's discussion. We're going to vote on it on the 22nd. Anybody have any other questions? You've had an opportunity to review, review the application, so, okay. We've been right along the code of student conduct for 2017-18. Dr. Bracy.
Yes, we, we met last week with the native members, well, member, Ms. Atkinson.
Sorry, I couldn't make that.
No, no problem. With Dr. Sandlin, Dr. Shepherd, myself, Dr. Taylor, and reviewed the, the proposed code of student conduct in draft form. And within that document, you know, there's been much discussion about that throughout the school year. So with that being said, we started the beginning of the year with Dr. Sandlin going to workshops where other school divisions were to make sure that we properly put together the code of student conduct as it should be, following all the policies and procedures and codes from the state. So that part we took care of. We also received information from, from community groups, Virginia organizing group. I think Mr. Neal even brought us a, a book from Hampton, which Hampton was at the, the session that we, that Dr. Sandlin attended and I think about seven or other eight school divisions were there and they shared the different code of student conduct handbooks that they all had. So the, the language and the layout is, is a bit different this year. Even in our discussion and our review last week, we talked about some of the consequences and some of the areas that were there to make sure that, that everybody was on the same page as far as what we were seeing. So Dr. Sandlin couldn't be with us tonight, but Dr. Shepherd, who worked with us, is present. Dr. Kramar and Dr. Kramar, yes, yes, sir.
Worked with us, too.
Yeah, Dr. Kramar, yeah. Dr. Kramar was involved with it as well. I know he couldn't attend the meeting, but he, he had, we had his input also.
Just a question. What input do the principals have on the code of conduct?
I know that she had a discipline, a discipline committee and principals were serving on that committee. And so the input from the principals came through the folks that served on that discipline committee to look at it, review it and to update.
So the principals, they have?
They had a voice as far, it is my understanding that there was a discipline committee that wrote this and on that committee, there were, there were principal representatives. And, and assistant principals.
Do you know where that meeting was held?
There were several meetings. I don't have the specific dates, but there were several, it wasn't just one meeting. They had a series of meetings, according to Dr. Sandlin.
We can get you a copy of it if you, if you, if you.
Yeah, we can, we can report out on that.
The agenda, if that's what you did.
Yeah, I would.
Okay.
And also with that, is it possible, and in the past, were the handbook changes that were made were highlighted?
I was going to ask, I was going to ask that same question.
I would like to see that.
We had asked that she include the copy with the strikes through in it to show where the changes were made and somehow that got dropped. So what we will do is try to get that in here by Monday so that the board can review it before next week's vote.
And I would also ask if we could possibly push the vote back to July?
I mean, the reason is that it's got to get printed, so it, I mean, July, we meet July 10th.
That's, that's not, that's not a problem.
The only reason why we weren't trying to push it back is because it has to be printed and by law, the bullying policy has to be approved by July 1.
Oh, I thought it was approved already.
No, we have to, we have to implement, no, we have
That's the resolution.
Another bullying policy, which has to go in here and has to be approved by July 1.
My reasoning for asking to move the vote back was, was the fact that we have it up for discussion tonight. We're going to vote on it before the public gets a chance to talk about it. And we make any changes deemed necessary or discussed. I mean, because I just, I hate for it to, to be up, for people to look at it, for people to have, you know, opinions about it and then we vote on it and it seems like we didn't take their opinions into consideration. I, I, I don't, I don't know how to, I, I don't know how to put it any plainer and I don't know how to put it any nicer. If we, if we're putting it up for discussion and it was put out for public review, not only on, in our board docs, but on social media.
Website.
So how are they supposed to give us their input? Because there's not a discussion point before we vote on it. I mean, it's like discussion, public, you know, comment and then vote.
I agree with you because one of the, one of the things, and I'm glad Reverend Patilla brought it up, is that when I started reading, I, in previous years, it was always in red letter what was being changed, deleted. And I thought, well, this certainly, I mean, this is not the final thing. So I'm glad that we're going to get, because I want to know what the changes are and the additions before I even, but I think we can put it on the website and ask, you know, and let it be known.
I thought it was on the website.
It is on the website.
I mean, the, the changes. Are the changes on the website?
We usually put the document up for discussion.
Well, it's on the we-
It's on the website.
I mean, the, the current one is on the website.
When I asked that in the past.
Oh, okay. I've been, okay, yes.
I just want to clarify, Miss Williams, she wasn't at the table. In the past, they normally highlighted what was being changed.
The changes.
So we can see it wasn't done this year that way. I just want to see what changes are actually being made.
Me, too.
So I can compare.
Yes, sir.
Just two quick questions. So Dr. Bracy, if I'm understanding you right, then all organizations, everyone that, that's came to the table with regards to this policy, they're in agreement with us?
I didn't say they were in agreement with it. We listened to some of the, the concerns that they, that they brought before us and took those into consideration when we made the revisions to the draft that we have before you.
And then my second point, and it is, this is probably just something that, that I'm at with regards to self-defense. I mean, I'd hate to see any student having to defend themselves, but at the same time, and we've seen some very horrific cases that has came through where students have been seriously hurt and so forth, that I, I just don't know if, if we have a case which is clearly substantiated that it was a self-defense case, I'm not so sure if that should be at the same level as one that, that was the bully or the aggressor with that. I mean, I, I don't think the policy is intending, or I'd, I'd hope not, that the policy is intending that if, that you're supposed to just take whatever happens to you and not defend yourself at any measure whatsoever just so that you don't get expelled. I mean, do, do you see what I'm saying? And I don't know how we changed that. I don't know how that reflects, but I wouldn't expect anyone to just get physically harmed for fear of, of defending yourself, blocking or striking back, and you're going to be expelled for, for, for that. I mean, so that's just something to keep in mind.
Ms. Williams and then Ms. Atkinson.
What?
Ms. Williams and then Ms. Atkinson.
I think Board Member Lamb makes a very good point and normally, I think, like Reverend Patillo just said, we very rarely expel them for that. They may come before us, but we don't really expel them. But is there any way the policy could have a statement included as far as, you know, the board will decide that or some type of exception if it is clearly self-defense?
At the level of the hearing, but at the school level, it's, it's going to be the administrator's judgment based on the situation that occurs at the time.
Okay, is that in part of the policy now and the code of conduct?
Well, that's, it, it doesn't spell it out. It doesn't spell it out to, to that, but that's
That's how it works.
Yes. That's how it works. Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Actually, if the, the whole, if we got the red strike through from Dr. Sandlin, that would actually be in it. She was supposed to add something towards that discretion on the school level in reference to self-defense. But that is supposed to be one of the added items under fighting. But like you said, it's, it's hard to see what's going on without
Without the red.
Without the red.
So we're going to get, we're, we're going to get this tomorrow.
Get it by Monday at the latest.
Good.
We'll update it on all the sites.
Yeah, please, all right.
One, one further question. I'm sorry, thank you. How do, I understand it's got to be printed, correct?
Yes.
So we collect the signature pages they stay in. That's a part of the discipline record when it, when, when, if, hope not, we get to that point. Does this stay on the website all year as well so that it is? Because this comes home at the beginning of the school year and it gets put in the stack of papers that you need to sign and you spend 48 minutes signing things to go back to school the next day, so.
It's on the website, the whole year.
It'll stay up.
Okay. I just want to make sure everybody has access to it, that it doesn't get tossed or put aside because it's the first-day packet.
It's better to go to the website and look it up.
It is.
In more discussion concerning the student code of conduct?
Chairman Parent, just again, that we have to, if we don't approve this, we have to adopt the, the added bullying policy by July 1.
Well, if we receive, if we
If we receive the next one.
The next one, Monday, then we'll have time to review it and we should be able to vote on it on the 22nd.
And so we're going to tell the public that if they have any comments about the new one, that it needs to go to the Ask Super or to however, to get their feedback in so that we have a chance to make any, as we deem necessary, adjustments to our student, okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
You were raising?
Ms. Reese is going to take care of it. Good evening.
Good evening.
No, no. You take care of all that.
That you were going to send something out in reference to the code of conduct and if the public
Absolutely. We already have. We also shared it with the media and I'm happy to include any other updates and provide an opportunity for more people to provide even more of that.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Would it be, would it be possible then, Mr. Parent, Ms. Atkinson, that maybe we could call another meeting, a committee meeting to review the changes that have come in so that way before Thursday, we can address what we've received? Is that possible?
It's possible. It thinks possible.
Anything's possible. And then we got to get it to Mr. Meekins, correct?
Oh, yes.
And then, and then, sorry.
Sir? Yes.
So if they submit changes and you all review them next week, so when will the board actually get the highlight updates after that?
I heard Monday.
Well, that will be up there, the, the red lines will be up there Monday.
But then you say you're going to have more.
But, but based on what we received, to be considered, I thought it would be a good idea if the, the committee got back together to see if they thought recommendations that were received need to be included.
Then, then you all can email it to us for review before we get to the meeting to vote.
22nd.
So we, we can communicate to see what date.
Get our calendars.
Okay.
Okay, all right, moving on. Wellness policy.
Wellness?
I eat my cake. I don't guess that, please.
The wellness policy requires updating this year as well, so we convened with the wellness committee. And I believe, Ms. Atkinson, you want to come in as well? Okay. So Mrs. Moore is here tonight to answer any questions about the proposed changes. Some of these changes are definitely required by law. As you will see from the policy, we have given you strikes through and also provided additional information to support the rationale. The committee that convened consisted of members of the nurse, the, the school, you can tell them that.
Members of the committee were supervisor of health services, the director of food services, as well as Mr. Richardson, assistant director of food services and myself and Dr. Taylor.
And after we created a draft, we met with the, with Dr. Bracy and members of the school board to review the changes. Do you have any questions?
I want the cornella bars with milk.
They sound good, though.
No pizza. I'm guessing pizza.
I have a, I have a question. It's more for Dr. Bracy than it is for, I'm going to say Sharon, I'm sorry, because you've always been Sharon. We've talked about doing, oh, what's, I just lost it, a pharmacy, an employee pharmacy. Have we looked any farther? I mean, it's been busy, but can we, can we start moving to the point where we start looking at doing a pharmacy for ourselves? Where we do, where we have, you know, lower deductibles that go along with our insurance, where we tie in wellness goals of staff to our insurance? Because I know my current employee now, we, we, we have to get five points a year to keep, you know, a lower deductible and that includes getting your annuals, all that good stuff. But as we move through this, this healthcare bit and we're talking about, you know, making changes to our plans and that's something that I know would be beneficial not only to our staff, but I think other entities in Portsmouth would want to go along into a Portsmouth wellness plan that includes, you know, cheaper pharmaceuticals. It includes, you know, a Minute Clinic rather than having to go to the ER, having to go to Harborview or whatever, but having those things on call. And I know it's one of the things we talked about about two years ago before you got your feet and your elbows and your neck in it. But I would like to see us revisit that for a future benefit to our employees as well. Just tying it all together.
Just because pharmacy.
Hampton has one as well.
Yeah.
I mean, you can get like 90 count of Claritin for like seven bucks.
Oh.
You know, so, and it's all private-run. It's not tied to
Dr. Bracy, Dr. Bracy, all right.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions, board members, concerning wellness?
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for being patient.
Consideration, 4.6, consideration of a resolution, auction of school buses.
Move for approval.
All right, any discussion?
You want to go by those?
Hearing no discussion. Madam Clark? We're going to get rid of these school buses. Move on.
Yeah. That's right.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Reverend Fleming? Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Almost voted for Joe again, but I decided against it.
Consideration of contract RFP 907-P, 1678, to provide painting services. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made, a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clark, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Roll call vote. Consideration to purchase as a Roll call vote, consideration to purchase as a sole source the Discovery Education textbook. Techbook, is it techbook?
Techbook.
Techbook, okay. Techbook and Discovery Education streaming license from Discovery Education Incorporated. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made, and second, Mrs. Hines.
I do have a question. Have we gone through textbook adoption for this?
I don't know. I would assume that the...
You mean the process for textbook adoption?
Yes, have we gone through a full textbook adoption?
This software, as opposed to...
This is an online resource for a textbook.
This is, actually, it's a, but it's also a core for, for the textbook.
That we currently use?
We don't, you know, we currently don't use this. We're going, this right here, we're going to the electronic textbook, right.
But we, because, I mean, I looked up code today, because it, it's hairy, because if you're going to use it as a textbook, it has to go through the textbook adoption process, even if it's sole source, and even though it doesn't have an "is been", you know, and an "is been" usually determines whether or not it's a textbook. But if this is going to be used for core instruction as a textbook, it still has to go through the textbook purchase, and through the textbook adoption purchase.
If we use the textbook funds for it.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct. So, to me, if this hasn't gone through the textbook adoption process, I can't, I'm not going to vote on it because it hasn't gone through the process. And I know that the State Department is leery and questionable about digital and media services. But it still says a textbook, if it's going to be used for core instruction, it's got to go through the process. Now, we can write our RFP if we want to for a digital source, and this is going to be the only one that comes up as a digital online textbook. And you understand what I'm saying? But if, but if we're going to put in our, in our bid packet that it has to be electronic, this is going to be the only one you're get, but you've done the process. So, I'm questioning the process here.
Okay, and I would be too, because the bottom line is that you've got to have a committee of teachers, and they've got to review it.
And it's a six to eight, I'm sorry, it's a six to eight month process?
It is.
Or four to six, depending on how many...
I was going to ask the same question, because I know it's got to be on the state adoption.
Right.
It's got to be adopted by the state, but there's a process, and we've got to follow the process, even though it's electronic, yes.
So, I know for as long as I've been on the board, we've been talking about textbooks and eventually using them, but we weren't prepared already to purchase them, that we've never...
But you got to, you still have to go through the process. Even what, even if it's an electronic textbook, you still have to go through the process. I mean, teachers have to, you have to put it out there for teachers to review, and score it, and all that stuff.
Public comment, public review, board review.
Right.
I have another question.
We do.
Another question.
Well, I can't vote on either. Go ahead.
The other pieces, and we all know that I love social studies to the end of the earth and back, but to spend this money in social studies in a time where we could put it in English or math, you understand what I'm saying, and are we waiting?
Are those adoptions ready yet?
English is in the middle of review right now, so probably the end of next year. So, I mean, I'm just asking if there was other ways, other places to spend this money where it would better, I'm just trying to be holistic.
Other places to spend a textbook?
Yes. You've got state lists that go all the way back to 2002.
They presented the recommendation.
Right.
Well, we, we, yeah, we reviewed this process, and I think what it is, we've got, social studies is coming up anyway, but with, with the electronic textbook, we get the adoptions yearly, daily. So, it's not like we would have to go through another process, because each year is updated, and some of the, some of the pieces with this is updated daily.
Right.
So, it's, it's, it's current.
Right.
So, this is something that we saw, I mean, and we, we looked at Discover for, when they came, we also saw the, the math, we also saw the, the science with it as well. But we were looking at, looking at it for the social studies. Social studies is something that we do well with, so if we're going to venture down the road of using electronic textbooks or textbooks, then let's go with something that we're already pretty good at.
Right.
And that way, we can navigate the path through that. So, that's, that's why we, we went that way with it. I mean, I realize, I understand what you're saying. You know, this is, this is looked upon as a, as a core, but it also can be used as a resource to what we have. So, you really have the options there, but, and I'm not trying to split any hairs. You know, I want to make sure that we do what above board, but that's all I'm saying.
If this is not replacing the textbook, and it's only as a resource, and that's a horse of a different color.
Yes.
But if it's replacing the textbook, and it's going to be the textbook, you've got to follow the, you've got to follow the state guidelines of adopting a textbook.
Is it a textbook or is it a resource?
Is it a resource?
It's a, it's a, it's a resource, but it's also can be considered core material.
It's the main textbook.
One of the, we don't, we're not purchasing textbooks. We're not purchasing...
You're purchasing that.
You're purchasing online site licenses.
But it's still the process. I'm talking about the process.
Why don't we withdraw this until you all get the process correctly?
Yeah, and we'll look at all of that to see how it needs to...
I withdraw my second.
He withdrew his.
Yeah, we'll huddle back together.
All right, 4.8 has been drawn. All right, next item is 4.9, consideration of contract number ITB 902-B, 1617, for gym and stage four, recoding, repair, and refinishing services.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion's made. Did I hear second?
Yes.
Oh, second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Terrance, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Yes, I did it again.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
The real room is...
I'm going to take her, yes.
The real room is...
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you, Lord. Consideration, 4.10, consideration contract number ITB 896-B, 1617, to purchase luxury, ooh, I like, luxury vinyl floor tile.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, motion's made, second, any discussion? Oh, you don't like the luxury part of it?
I love the luxury part of it. The question is, when you look at the bid, we had a low bidder who was disqualified because they failed to sign an amendment. I want to know what the amendment, I just, I would just like to know what the amendment entailed, because I'm all for low bidder. But when you read it, it said that they failed to sign an amendment. So, what was, I would like to just know what the amendment was, and, and maybe why they didn't sign the amendment.
It wasn't amendment, they did not submit an amendment.
Okay.
The amendment was a modified pricing sheet.
Okay.
And they're low because they did not submit all their pricing.
Okay, I just needed clarification. I just wanted to ask a question.
It was an amendment of what was a modified pricing sheet.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, all right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any more discussion? Hearing more, more discussion. Madam Clark, please.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Reverend Fleming?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Reverend Patillo?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Parent?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
4.11, review or revise school board policies. Dr. Bracy?
The Policy Committee met last week also, and we began to look through the policies that you have in, in board docs, and you can see the strike throughs on the policies that are, that have been revised, and the ones that are in blue that are, that are brand, that are brand-new policies. So, that's a current update. What, what you will see, we're going to, probably Monday or Tuesday, some of those will have specific language as it pertains to PPS. We're waiting on food nutrition to get us specific numbers to put in, where, how it's applicable to us, so, but, but most, the majority of them are just straightforward changes and updates by VSB.
The next item is the review of the June 22 agenda.
Are there, any, any questions about the...
We did add, we did add on the agenda the, the election of the student representative and alternate on the 22nd. Yes, ma'am.
That's the question I had. So, we only received one application?
No, we have additional applications.
I just, I just seen one.
Oh, that's...
You got some more besides the one?
Yes, that's why I was pulled.
Okay, got you, got you.
Yes, that's why I was pulled.
Ms. Williams and I are going to be interviewing on Tuesday. Yeah.
We interviewed last week, and then we got some more.
Okay, I was just wondering, was it just one application?
Okay. Any other questions? Board Members' reports, anybody want to, yes?
No reports, but I just want to thank Canaya Carey for the cupcakes that she provided for today.
And I'm going to get one in a few minutes.
Yeah, Michaela brought them, and she wanted us to let her know that Canaya made the cupcakes.
Nice.
Delicious.
They're delicious.
That may give me a couple hours of those, so I won't fall asleep. Thank you for thinking of them. All right.
Can we, oh, can we add one thing to the agenda, and it's not going to be long? Can we run graduation by the numbers? Can we talk about how many students graduated, how much money in total Portsmouth students received in scholarships? Can we talk about how many honor grads, how many credits? Is that retreat, or is that?
Retreat. We did that at graduation. You want a recap?
I, I would like a whole Portsmouth recap, you know, by the numbers. What are, I, I, I mean, I know each individual school did it, but since we're sitting here in graduation season, it'd just be nice, how many, how many, how many students graduated? How much money?
Okay, Dr. Bracy? Yes, sir.
Unless, I don't want to do it twice. We know, we normally do it at retreat, and we meet with each individual school, and then go over all the graduation numbers and percentages and cohorts, but if we do that, we actually want to do it twice.
We do it, we did the cohorts.
I mean, it's, I just wanted to put it up there for consideration.
Oh, the ad will run on the 21st.
And it'll have that information on it. You know, that we do the ad each year that we, we've purchased.
Okay.
And it'll have the, the total amount of scholarship.
I think by August, sometimes it's a little bit removed, you know? I just want to have that positive Portsmouth story sitting there at the end of, at the end of the school year.
That'd be part of the ad.
It's kind of the graduation cap.
You familiar with the ad, aren't you?
Mm-hmm.
And it will replay over and over on Peeta each graduation where they recapped all of that.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
The only other thing, the reminder was the PTA Council and the business...
Yeah, that's on Friday.
Community.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, tomorrow, TCC.
Tomorrow's Friday.
From 5:30 to 7:30, they are honoring teachers, teacher appreciation. So, it's a reception with refreshments, and they wanted to make sure everyone knew. It's in the Student Center, Building E.
Okay.
Okay, all right, now, the Subcommittee Reports, Budget Finance, Reverend Patillo and I met with Bracy, and you heard our, basically, you heard the majority of the report. Reverend Patillo, do you, anything else you want to add? I mean, we covered basically...
We covered pretty much the insurance options, but also that our burn rate is going well as far as our spending.
Right.
We're going to go over it next meeting, the finance, and those are the only two things we covered in the last meeting, mostly insurance.
Right. City, City Council lays on, we haven't met, corporate sponsorship, anything there? Correctment instruction, y'all did meet, didn't you?
Yes, we met.
Anything to, that you want to enlighten us?
No, we did talk about some ongoing things, and we're looking at getting principal input as far as zone waivers are concerned. There's some inconsistency with that. So, Dr. Taylor's going to get with principals and start getting some consistency running through there. We talked about summer school. We talked about CTE in the academies, and the course offerings. Some, TCC has, has basically told us that we, they can provide just about anything, any course that they want, so as we start building our CTE fold. If we don't have the staff or the, or the way to do it, then maybe TCC would be another viable option. And the question was asked once again, you know, it's been said that there's a barrier with, with TCC courses, but that's not the case when it comes to CTE courses. So, that whole barrier thing is out the window, and that's about it right now.
Ms. Williams, did y'all talk about how we can enhance and improve the GT program? Gifted and Talented Program?
Yes, we talked about that a little bit. We're going to revamp. Dr. Taylor presented, they're going to revamp the whole program and bring in a brand-new...
Thank you very much.
Person.
That's open, because it's open right now.
I think you're advertising.
We're advertising right now.
The Human Resources Committee?
We did meet. We had a very good meeting, and we discussed a lot of things. Also, personnel, closed session, so I can't discuss it right now.
That's right.
Can I ask a question? For the HR Committee, it was brought to my attention, and I was just wondering if we could get a report back as a board. Apparently, our bereavement leave policy is three days, but our people are charged leave for three days for bereavement leave. I would like to know what it is in other divisions, because hearsay is one thing, research is another. And so, but it's just been brought to my attention that we charge three days of bereavement leave where some other divisions may not. And I know that three days is...
Charged three days.
You, you're taking out of your sick leave.
Policy is written down, they can take, employees are entitled to three days of bereavement leave, and it's charged to their sick leave.
Sick leave.
Right.
Oh, yeah, that shouldn't be.
I would be, I would be in favor of not doing that.
The city does three days of bereavement leave. It's not charged.
But our teachers are being charged.
Oh, no, I don't think...
We need to revise that part. We need to revise.
And I'm just looking at equity across, you know, I mean, and it's a small thing, three days, three days leave is not, you know, I mean, if we get to a point where we have, you know, a ton of bereavement leave, but I mean, you've got a...
Somebody dying every month.
Well, normally, what it was, with the city, they gave you three days. And if you needed more time after the fourth day, you certainly use your annual leave or something.
Right.
But it was three days free that they did not.
And that's what we charged.
Oh, absolutely.
Right, I mean, you got to put some capstone on it, you know, but it can also be...
Well, bereavement leave is also, the policy defines, you know, your spouse, your children, your in-laws, or your grandmother. It's not your cousins and uncles. Yeah, they define who that applies to. It's not everybody in your family.
Well, if that's the board's pleasure, I can try to have something ready to put in.
That would be good.
That's the board's pleasure for next week.
Does everybody agree?
Does everybody agree? I'm sorry. I'm really sorry. It's 10:15. I'm kind of punchy. I'm sorry. Is it the board's policy?
Yes.
Somebody get our chairman ready to go.
You need a Red Bull.
Legislative, legislative and policy.
No new updates at this time.
All right, thank you. Minority contractors' business policy.
We have a meeting coming up in July.
Okay.
We have new members.